Right, it's on, right, it's on.
Okay, we're gonna call the January 21st, 2025 meeting, calling it to order. Could we have a roll call?
Mayor Singer.
Here via Zoom.
Vice Mayor Einstein.
Here.
Councilmember Mendel.
Here.
Councilmember Luskin.
Here.
Councilmember Bernstein.
Here.
Chief, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, you're, we're missing you tonight. Your attendance has been impeccable through the years. I don't know how many meetings you've missed, probably about two.
This will be the second one that he's ever missed.
And like, I think the last one, I happened to be the vice mayor, I think maybe you did it one year, you did it for him one time too, so. Anyway, we miss you, we hope you feel better soon.
Thank you.
We're gonna do presentations and town proclamations. I think we're gonna hear from the Citizens Independent Transportation Trust. Is that on for tonight?
That is, that is correct.
With Javier A. Bettencourt, are you here, sir?
No, we have two, two of the county staff members in his stead, and they're gonna make a brief presentation on all the great things that the CITT has done for South Florida and for the Miami-Dade community since its passage over twenty-something years ago. With that said, let me introduce Carla Damian, Chief Community Engagement Officer, and Mariana Price, Municipal Program Manager. They have the four.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, town council members and staff, and to everyone watching the meeting. Again, my name is Carla Damian. I'm here to represent the Citizens Independent Transportation Trust. I hope you can hear me well. Do you have like a, or just say?
Just, just, let's go with the slides up, let's get that mic up.
Okay. It's on. I just probably need to speak a little louder.
All right, there you go.
Okay, so with the first slide, please. Just to give you a little bit of history in the beginning, very quickly, in, back in 2002, November 2002, the voters were asked if they wanted to levy themselves half penny surtax, increased surtax to use this to expand mass transit in the county. The voters overwhelmingly said yes. And with that, so the People's Transportation Plan was created. Next slide, please. The People's Transportation Plan was created as well as our organization, the Citizens Independent Transportation Trust, to serve as a watchdog and make sure that the money that was allocated towards transportation and transit projects was being used in a proper way, what the people had decided to vote it for. So the CITT is an entity that audits, investigates, and sees again how this money is spent and invested in projects. Next slide, please. So we represent a volunteer trust of made up of fifteen members. Our chair, Robert Wilfarth, is your representative here in District Four. We also have a representative from the mayor's office, also from the League of Cities, and again Javier Ben Corden is our executive director. Next slide, please, thank you. As I mentioned, we have our, our members, they meet once a month, and we are currently looking for trust members who may be interested. We have three vacancies on our board, so if you know anyone who might be interested, please do have them apply. Next slide, please. And this is our office. According to, you know, our regulations, our office can spend, you know, or the budget for our office can be up to five percent of the money collected, but we try to keep it low, less than that, up to like maybe less than one percent, because we believe that the money should be going towards the transportation and transit projects that the voters voted for. Next slide, please. Cities are audited every three to four years, Mariana, more or less. So this is a list of all the cities that participate. We have of the thirty-four municipalities in Miami-Dade County, we have thirty-three cities who do receive months, the funds from surtax funds that go towards transit and transportation projects. And Mariana Price is going to tell you a little bit more when we get to the municipality portion of that. Next slide, please. So over the years, we have collected close to five billion dollars, and a lot of people ask where has this money gone? And the majority of it has gone to transit projects, as you can see on the slide. Another good chunk of it has gone to municipalities who use that money for transit and, and public works projects. Another great majority of it has gone to public works projects as indicated above. Next slide, please. This is just a little more detail on the expenditure of the surtax funds. Next slide, please. So over, in the last year, we collected approximately four hundred and twenty-four million dollars, and that is more or less the average of what we've been collecting yearly. It has gone up a little bit, estimated for next year. I think it might be going a little lower than that, but we'll have to see that when the numbers come in. Next slide, please. And this is just a kind of snapshot of our pro forma. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So the People's Transportation Plan, again, as I mentioned before, has gone a lot of it to transit services. It also, a lot of people don't know that all the new rail cars that were purchased recently were funded by the People's, by the surtax funds. All the municipal, the municipality trolley service that you have is also funded through that. Roadway improvement projects, the Golden Passport Program that really benefits our elderly in our communities has been funded through that. So this is just a little snapshot of all the municipal, of all the services that are provided, or funds where they go. So I'll bring up Mariana Price, who is our Municipal Program Manager, and she'll tell you a little bit more about Golden Beach.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mariana Price, and I oversee the municipal program at the CITT. Golden Beach is a unique municipality in that there are fewer than one thousand people here, and the way that we distribute the surtax funds to the municipalities is based on population. So it's pretty amazing that Golden Beach is able to participate. There's not a transit system, but you guys do always maintain compliance because you spend those funds on transit eligible expenses such as the bus shelters and, but maintenance of bus shelters, so that, that counts for that. And then also you use your funds for the roadway surfacing and remilling, and so it's very helpful that way. Maria Camacho is my liaison here, and she's wonderful, so she's my point of contact. The surtax distribution that Town of Golden Beach gets hovers around sixty thousand, and it goes pretty far. And considering you guys are near oceanfront and how expensive those bus shelters are, you know, it helps to pay for those expenses. So thank you very much.
Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor and members of the council and our residents, I think it's important to share a couple of things, because we are such a small municipality. For years, the CITT and us have been working at ways to make sure that we don't lose those dollars. As, as you heard earlier, they get audited, and typically if they're not using the program that they're allocated for, they can be recovered. But because the CITT, through their executive director, have allowed us to build the fund to use for projects, we, we've been able to receive those dollars. The CITT concept is a great concept. It's about dedicated dollars to help ease mobility. And as we all have seen lately, we're seeing how more, how difficult it is to traverse here, and especially in northeast Miami-Dade County. One project that they, and I guess, I asked them to keep it brief tonight, and Mayor, I know that I speak too much, I just wanna talk a little bit about the last mile concept. And it's how to get from the closest transit area to that last mile. A lot of cities do the trolleys, as you know, in Ventura, they have the on-call trolley, and so do some of the other cities. One of the things that we're looking to do for Golden Beach, because now we have the Bright Line station that's gonna be a code, a co-ride station with Miami Metro Transit, they're looking to make that part of the metro system through programs with, with Bright Line. We're gonna be looking at a last mile concept that allows you to use electric bikes to get from here to the Bright Line. And so we're gonna be flushing out that idea as part of our last mile to keep those dollars here in Golden Beach instead of having to send them back. Because there's, there's only so many bus shelters that we can buy in Golden Beach. So we are gonna be working with the members of the CITT to become creative. It's not a lot of money that we receive, but the fact that we actually do receive dollars is a testament to the CITT's commitment that all cities, as part of the agreement, would get dollars. And, and I gotta tell you, they've been asking to come and present for the last eighteen years, and I've always been, well, we really don't need it. So I'm just glad that they're here. Thank you for the presentation. We know that, we know that we are just a small cog in, in the big, in the big picture, but we truly appreciate having you both here today. Please let the executive director know that we are grateful for the presentation. We will make our, your presentation available online so all of our residents can receive it. And as always, we'll make our newsletter available so you guys can community engage our residents of Golden Beach, and thank you.
Can I ask one question before you guys go?
Sure.
Is, are we able to use, so, and listening to how that money's allocated, is, so the money would be able to be used for transportation for residents if they wanted to go to and from the station? That could be part of the money that?
So we're, we're still flushing out those ideas. As you know, a lot of cities use those dollars for a trolley system in Golden Beach.
Or the freebies, or?
The freebies has, 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 is a new concept that they've amended their rules to allow. So you're seeing Ventura, I believe, North Miami, and others are using freebie. We've been in talks with freebie as well to see if they could provide that on-call service, but that's a new, new program. But the goal is that we not ever return our dollars, that we find creative ways to use it here in Golden Beach.
Hold on, I mean, I would think we usually use it for the paving or the, but to the extent there was extra, the freebie sounds like a?
Well, there's never any extra. That's, that's never the case. As you know, our millionaire services projects, the dollars are just as small. And, and look, we've been fortunate, because the true essence of the program is transportation, and they've allowed us to use it for, for millionaire servicing, because those are related expenses. But the idea is, how do we get you into one of the public offerings as soon as we can? So how do we get you onto the bus? How do we get you onto Metro? How do we get you out of your car so we have less congestion in our streets? And the staff at, at the CITT has done a phenomenal job in, in thinking outside the wheel on how we could do that.
Thank you very much.
Are you done with, no, a couple more slides. Let's go, let's go to them, let's go to them.
You skipped a little bit forward, if that's okay. We can go to the smart plan, which is, and as part of the smart?
Alex, we can't hear.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I said, we had skipped a little bit forward, but as part of the, the smart plan. So I don't know how familiar you may be with the smart plan, but the smart plan is made up of six corridors, and these corridors.
There you go.
Can't hear you.
Because you guys never put that one to charge. It's always on the air, it's always there.
Thank you very much. Okay, so the smart plan, as I mentioned before, is made up of six rapid transit corridors, which were really originally also part of the People's Transportation Plan, when people voted in favor of the half-cent surtax. But the, the plan has been updated. Now it's called the smart plan, and new, you know, studies have been done, new things have been developed. I really would like to focus on the northeast corridor, so if you can just fast forward a little bit to the northeast corridor, because this is the one that really is closest to you. We have, as part of the, in order to encourage, you know, the movement on the corridor, the CITT put money towards funding the construction of the Ventura Station. And the Ventura Station is going to be one of the terminus stations on the northeast corridor. The other one would be in downtown, you know, downtown Miami at Miami Central. And along this corridor is a, is a thirteen point five mile original connection that will, they're looking to establish five stations in between. The service is estimated to be about maybe every thirty minutes during peak, every sixty minutes off-peak hours. And currently the cost is at two hundred and ninety-seven million, of which the CITT has committed to over three hundred and thirty-eight million dollars towards the construction of this corridor. The Miami-Dade County also recently announced that they had managed to, well, they had worked with their federal partners to also try to get allocation for four hundred million dollars. That still has to be approved by the federal government, but it is moving, it looks like it's moving forward. So I just wanted to mention that as part of the, the presentation.
The great part about this corridor, for those of you who are not familiar with the smart plan, is that the concept of the smart plan is that you can go north, south, east or west, as far north as Ventura, which is county line, all the way down to Florida City, because you would just connect to the rapid, rapid railway system at government center and, and be able to go down. So the idea is that we, i- if you needed to go down to the, to, to South Florida, you can leave your car, jump on the, on the, on the train. In Golden Beach, you would either take a freebie or a bike over to the train station and, and kind of enjoy your day. The idea is to get less people, get people out of their cars and into the public transportation systems.
Yeah. And regarding the east-west court, I mean, the northeast corridor, we're also trying to build it as to be a true commuter rail service for people. So we're working towards that right now.
One of the stations, for those who don't know, is in the Wynwood Design District. So you would be able to go, go from Ventura to the Wynwood Design District Station, go shopping in the Design District and in Midtown and not have to take your car.
One of the planned stations, correct. If we go forward just to thirty-two, slide thirty-two, please. As Mr. Diaz mentioned, you know, we, we do focus a lot on first and last mile solutions connecting to major connections on transit. We also focus a lot on improving the customer experience, making sure that what we are funding is maintained, is working well, that the people are using it, and, and it's working for them. The other connection, municipalities, working closely with our municipalities, and community engagement to make sure that people know the services and projects that are being funded through the People's Transportation Plan and the half-cent surtax. Next slide, please. Now for the viewers who are watching, we also launched, and, and making sure that everything's working properly, we launched the CITT Ambassador Program. This program, volunteers can register or apply to be a CITT volunteer, and what they do is that they download a free application, fill out surveys, and when they tell us how the ride was, you know, what they saw, they receive points, and those points could be translated to discounts on Uber or Lyft. Next slide, please. Also, as part of community engagement, we launched the Mobility Matters Podcast that you can see on our Facebook page. We're working towards doing a YouTube channel, but right now on our Facebook page. And we have different topics related to transportation. So we welcome any of you, if you're interested in, in being a guest on our show, on our podcast, please let us know, reach out, and we'd love to have you. And that's the end of our presentation.
So I just wanna, I just wanna thank Carla and Mariana for being here today. It's an honor for Golden Beach to have the CITT staff represented. We will definitely invite you back in the next fifteen years to make your presentation. You're always welcome. And we'll make sure that we put your presentation online and we'll share with our residents. But thank you so much for being here tonight. Absolutely, you're the chair.
And here.
I travel around Ventura a lot.
Just, just speak into it, it's, okay, there you go, just speak into it.
Anyway, you control the buses, that's part of?
We don't control the buses. We do contribute to the funding of the purchase of the buses. But we, if you have any questions, we can put you in touch with the Department of Transportation.
I, I just, riding around here, the buses here are pretty aggressive. I mean, they are just, they do things that I don't do in a sports car. I mean, they'll, they'll run around Ventura and cut in front of cars. It's like?
If, if there's anything that you see you'd like to share with the Department of Transportation, let us know, and we'll?
Yeah, okay, a little dangerous, but anyway. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? No?
Thank you, again for being here tonight, thank you. Mr. Chair, it's not on the agenda, and I apologize that we didn't update the agenda. I'd like to take a point of personal privilege. I'd like to invite Mr. Jeff Sun and Roni Gert from the organization that we supported last year, Magen David Adom. As you know, we made a contribution to the organization after the October events in Israel. The mayor personally made a donation to one of the ambulances, which is actually downstairs for us to see, but Mr. Sun defrozoros.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening, everybody. My name is Jeff Sun, and my family lived in Golden Beach now for eleven years. I was recently appointed as the chairman of the Magen David Adom Advisory Board for Miami-Dade Broward Counties, and I'm here to represent MDA with Roni Gert. We want to take a moment to express our deepest gratitude to somebody who's been an unwavering supporter of Israel and a steadfast friend of Magen David Adom, our mayor, Glenn Singer. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. To remind everybody, in the United States, we have an array of organizations that provide disaster relief, ambulance services, emergency services, and blood supply. But in Israel, there's only one organization, Magen David Adom, which was started in nineteen thirty by seven doctors in Tel Aviv with a makeshift surgery room in Tel Aviv. Since then, we've grown to thirty-three thousand emergency medical technicians, medical providers, ambulance drivers, medicycle drivers, helicopter pilots, blood supply, and now even baby milk. We were fortunate enough to be initially supported by the founder of Home Depot, Bernie Marcus, who helped us to start a campaign, and we recently finished building the MDA Blood Center in Ramla, which is now underground, because in two thousand and twelve it was almost hit by missiles. And now being underground is the safest place for the nation's blood supply. In the immediate aftermath of the horrific attacks on Israel on October seventh, when so many of us were grappling with the enormity of the tragedy, the city of Golden Beach stood tall in solidarity with Israel. Mayor Singer, you led with compassion and action, demonstrating what it means to support the people of Israel in their time of need. As you know, Magen David Adom is not just an organization, it is a pillar of the state of Israel. It is the sole national emergency medical services organization mandated to serve this role, but not funded by the Israeli government. It is the arm of the International Red Cross in Israel, and as such cannot accept government subsidies. It is completely dependent upon donors like Mayor Singer and the community of Golden Beach and people around the world. MDA's life-saving services are funded by supporters, including our community here in Golden Beach. Magen David Adom also operates with the highest moral clarity, offering colorblind services to anyone in need, regardless of race, religion, nationality, or ethnicity. This commitment to humanity is part of what makes the organization so extraordinary. We have an ambulance parked here at Town Hall on the north side, which you can go downstairs and view, which is a testament to this community's generosity and dedication. Nearly twenty family members came together, including our very own Mayor Singer, to give us this remarkable gift, the gift of life. As a proud resident of Golden Beach, I am deeply honored to live in a city that only values the sanctity of life, but also depend, actively uphold it by supporting an organization like MDA. Mayor Singer, your leadership has inspired all of us to come together in support of Israel, to ensure that MDA could continue its vital work, and to show that even thousands of miles away, this community stands united with our brothers and sisters in Israel. Mayor Singer, thank you deeply for your steadfast commitment to Israel, to Magen David Adom, and to the values we hold dear. I'm proud to call you our mayor, and, and call Golden Beach our home, and most importantly, proud and part of a community that shares the enthusiasm and devotion to the state of Israel. As a small token of our gratitude, and to welcome you to Magen David Adom family, we'd like to present you with this MDA Medics vest, virtually. In Israel, this vest is more than just a piece of equipment, it is a symbol of hope. When somebody in Israel is hurt, regardless of who they are, and they see this emblem, they know that help is on the way, that lives will be saved, and that the unwavering commitment to the sanctity of life is in action. Thank you to Mayor Singer and the city of Golden Beach. Thank you so much.
If we could just take a, a picture with the council and the vest for our newsletter, if we could just briefly do that?
Superimpose the mayor.
The mayor will be superimposed. If we could step, step down real quick, or step up, actually step up.
Going, step.
There you go, perfect. Michael, you got that?
Here.
Come, come, come up here. And as a reminder, Golden Beach gave twenty-five thousand dollars to the organization. I know that the mayor also gave personal funds. So we accept this vest that we have from there. Wait, I want you one here, I'm gonna put the mayor right here. Michael, we gotta get you an iPhone sixteen.
Thank you. Thank you so much. On behalf of the mayor, he appreciates it, and the Town of Golden Beach appreciates all your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much for taking the time.
Thank you, Jeff.
And then afterwards, I encourage all of our staff, that encourage means you must, go down and visit the ambulance and take some, a few pictures around the ambulance so we can put in the newsletter, and of course, the members of the DA.
I'd just like to add that I, I personally went down and looked at the Magen David's facilities in Israel, and it's more than just the ambulance. They, they have the largest blood supply bank in all of Israel. They provide blood to everybody who gets injured, and the facilities they have to protect it are incredible. It's something that's been dear to my heart, that I've contributed to for years. I think it's a, an incredible cause, and I'm, I'm glad that Golden Beach supports it. And Jeff, congratulations, fantastic job. And great job, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Is there anything to the Zoom higher?
Okay.
We already hear that, okay.
Thank you so much. And a motion to set agenda, do we have any additions, deletions, removal of items, consent agenda, any changes to the agenda?
Counsel first. None from the administration.
Councilman Luskin? Mayor?
Nope.
Okay. Town manager?
None.
Okay, good and well fair. Do we have anybody signed up for tonight?
No one signed up, and no one on Zoom.
Okay. Mayor's report.
Yeah, I got just a few quick items. Can everyone hear me?
Perfectly.
A perfect thing. First, Jeff, thank you for presenting that to Town of Golden Beach, and it's a great cause. And if you don't already help contribute to it, I would recommend everyone do, because it's a really, really great cause, and it's such a necessity in Israel. And as Ken Bernstein, Councilman Bernstein, mentioned, it's a great facility. So thank you, Jeff, and thanks for bringing the ambulance over. Really appreciate that. I want to wish all the residents and my fellow council members a happy and healthy new year. I want to congratulate the individuals, Michael and Giselle, on a New Year's Eve party. I was not present, but I heard it was phenomenal. I only got raving reviews from everybody, the food, the entertainment. So great job, guys, hats off. I know you worked really hard. Want to thank Public Works for their contribution, and also Chief, UN Police Department for the support. It was great. I want to congratulate Councilwoman Luskin on her reelection. Great job, Councilwoman Luskin. It's an honor to work with you again, and I know it'll be a productive next several years. And I also want to congratulate Jesse Mandell. We're losing one good Mandell, and we're getting another good Mandell. So I want to congratulate Jesse on her election to the council. I know she'll be a great addition to the council. Hi, me, I can't thank you enough for your years of service. You were a pressure, a breath of fresh air to the council. You always added great ideas. You were very financially prudent, and really appreciate it. You will definitely be missed. And I, I want to congratulate you for your years of dedication, and also thank you. I really appreciate that. So this next year, we have an exciting year coming up. The town manager's gonna go over the projects we got working. We've got a lot of projects coming up, and it's very exciting for the council and the town. One thing I gotta mention, and I know Councilman Einstein will agree with me on this too. I was walking my dogs at like five o'clock in the afternoon, and the cars go down, Golden Beach Drive, like forty-five miles an hour. I mean, Councilman Einstein was out there when I was out there, and these cars, not just one car, several cars were just flying. They fly through the stop sign, they fly both heading north and south, and it's, it's not just residents, it's workers and residents. So Chief, I urge you, if you guys can put some extra patrol, it's like from five o'clock on. I guess people are leaving the job site or coming home from work. If you could please enforce that, someone's gonna get hurt, or God forbid, killed on that street. And that's it. Thank you. Sorry, did I miss the meeting? And just so you know, this is the second meeting that I missed in 20 years and the last one I was on Zoom also. So attendance is my pet peeve and I apologize for not being there, but I have a good cause.
Mayor, you do know we have to dock your pay, correct?
Yes.
Newly elected and current councilperson Judy Luskin, I'd like you.
Okay, just a few things. I received, as many of the residents in town did, a letter from the water company regarding lead in the water. And I received a number of phone calls in regards to it. I think it's something we need to look into because I think it frightens some residents that the pipes weren't appropriate. I know there was some responses to it and that you can't call the water company. But one of my concerns is if the water company two, three weeks ago started to send out some notices about replacing the line from the street to the house or insuring yourself for it in such a way.
It's not them.
It's not them?
It's not them. Yeah, so you're getting a lot of third-party companies that are sending out fraudulent letters that are asking you to insure your meter box, insure your water.
That's very misleading.
Yeah, so and they use the logos to be very careful. So the service line, and let's be clear, the lead issue, and I'm sorry for interrupting, Madam Councilmember, the lead issue has nothing to do with the water distribution system in Golden Beach. Our pipes are actually made out of PVC, not lead or anything. It's a lot of their distribution lines that get to Golden Beach and some of the service lines from the water pipe to your home. And so those are the things that they're making you aware of. But be careful with any third-party letters that you may get about insuring those service lines.
Okay, it just seemed odd that one followed the other so closely.
If you could just send me a copy of that letter so we could get to the bottom of it.
Okay. New Year's Eve was great. The setup was different than usual and it was just a great time for everyone. I've also taken a lot of calls because a lot of residents, their palm trees are dying. And they're calling every place they can to either replace them or to find out what's wrong. And I'm finding that it's from the weather we've had. We've had some very interesting weather, very windy, cold weather, four or five days in a row, and it's affecting everybody's palm trees. So to the residents that are listening and that are ready to go out and buy new ones because they think they've done something wrong, I think it's just something that we have to wait out. Alex, maybe you could address this in your manager's report. There's been a lot of questions about the key fobs, the tennis courts, people getting in, leaving the doors propped open, parking, a lot of questions about parking at the Civic Center in the evening. How they could get in, I'm not sure unless you live here and even then it might be problematic. Will you be addressing that?
Sure.
Okay. I think that's about it. Oh, one last thing. Little touchy, Singer Park. It's just lost its charm with the garbage truck out there, the palm trees that are surrounding it. It gets a little odorous and there was a time where Singer Park, before it was Rock Park and it couldn't be used at all. Now it's just not pristine and the kids that usually go there and families that would at night.
Madam Councilmember, I hear you loud and clear. Just know that the town has limited space, especially with the addition of our Wellness Center. The alley behind Singer Park will have some improvements done this year to kind of hide that area. But our real estate is very limited. And so unfortunately, we had to take over that alleyway for expanding our public works needs. But I'm aware of the issue. Trust me, the mayor reminds me of it every day because it is honoring the Singer family. Know that we are aware of it and we'll be working to making some better additions to that area.
Perfect. Thank you. That's it.
Councilman.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mayor Singer, thank you for the very kind words. Unfortunately, you're stuck with me for one more meeting before the good Mandell comes and replaces me. So I'll leave a nice little speech for them, but thank you for the kind words anyways. Just wanted to say, New Year's event I did attend, as did a lot of my family and for some friends, and it was absolutely fantastic. The setup was great this year. You guys knocked it out of the park. So now you have a playbook for the next few years on that. I'm not going to take up too much time, so that was it. Thanks.
Councilman Bernstein?
Yes, I'd first like to congratulate the mayor, our illustrious Councilwoman Judy Luskin and Jesse Mandell. Jaime, you will be missed. Now you'll have more free time to do things like exercise and ride bikes. I missed my first New Year's Eve party in years. I heard it was incredible. I didn't quite understand the change in the format, but I heard it was very nice. I'd love to see that more. Is that a permanent change or?
We like to spice things up every once in a while.
I would like to bring a couple of things just to attention with the new year. With the change in the road, with so much construction, I just feel like traffic on A1A is one of our biggest issues. It's just there are some times where it takes so long to get through. And just seeing whatever we can do to try to minimize it and notify residents and to the extent that we're able to open up some roads or have police officers open up roads. And the other thing is, just when we're talking about pulling people over for things, just to think if there's a place that we can pull them over, pull over anyone who's in violation where it's not hindering traffic because I know safety is so critical and making sure that usually we end up having two police cars. But just trying to figure out a way that we might do it so that we feel like we safely protect our officers, but also try to.
I tend not to interrupt, but know that as it relates to when an officer pulls over a vehicle, if we ask that vehicle to move somewhere else and something happens, we own that. That's why when an officer pulls you over, that's where it needs to occur because anything that happens after we engage those lights, we're responsible. And so we're.
And I'm not disagreeing. I've not said anything to the contrary with it. I'm just saying maybe we can find the safest and best place so that we don't obstruct traffic and so that the police officers can pull them over there. Maybe it's just waiting a second to pull it over, but I'm saying the same thing as you, finding the safest in this place. The next thing that I've seen a lot of issues with over the past two or three months is just people, they went away, but all of a sudden the iguanas started coming back to a lot of houses. I think they went away again with the cold. But if we could, like I think if to the extent we're able to provide, you know, work out something with someone, some iguana service where we can get a reduced rate for people and offer that to our residents so that if they have those issues, they can call. Because I just see so many people complaining about it, but just not really knowing what to do and the best way to handle it. And we have, we've had a lot of new residents since the issues came up years ago and when we addressed it years ago. So just thinking about that. And with the palm trees, yeah, I think I asked the gardener the same thing and he was just saying, hey, that's just the weather and hopefully it comes back. But I was running into the same issue that you heard. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, real quickly, I was giving my marching orders. I want to echo my congratulations to the mayor, Judy Luskin, the new Mandell coming into office, Jesse, and unfortunately Jaime Mandell, who's leaving. You will be missed. And we appreciate all your service. The second note on the New Year's Eve party, I heard it was great. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend. But again, Michael Glenn and your staff, you know, people can't thank you enough for all the hard work you do. As the mayor mentioned, the, once in a while I'm outside and Glenn's walking the dogs and we'll stop for a minute and these cars just come, you know, blazing by. I want to take a rock and just throw it at them.
Please don't do that.
You know, or have some, I'd like to have a whatever. It's a little dangerous. There's a lot of construction going on in Golden Beach Drive, gardeners, whatever. And you know, sometimes they're weaving in and out and these kids, everybody's on a scooter today. You know, and they don't wear helmets. It's, I'd just like to, whatever we could do proactively, you know, I think we should try. So with that, I think I'm going to move right along to the next item.
If I could just ask one question?
Go right ahead.
Is Jaime here for the next meeting?
He is.
Okay. I'll save my comments.
Okay, so with that.
Is that unusual that that?
No. I explained, I'm about to explain.
Okay. With that, we're going to have the town manager report.
Sure.
Major projects update.
Yeah, and I'll try to keep it brief, but this is the first time that we meet since November. So I do have just a couple of things I want to bring the councilmate aware of. So as you know, last year throughout the entire summer, we advertised the town's elections by our charter. The way the elections work is that you have to file and qualify the first week of the year. And so this year, Councilman Mandell is stepping down from the council as his residency has changed. So we had two open seats, there are two open council seats, and as you know, the mayor's seat is up every two years. So during the qualifying period, there are only two individuals who picked up council packets for the council and one individual who picked up packets for the mayor. I know that there was a lot of questions as to when was the election? We didn't get the vote. So by your charter and by county rules, when there are two vacancies and only two candidates for those vacancies, those candidates are automatically elected by the electors without opposition. So the way it works is that tonight, we will ratify the results of the elections. Yes, there was an election, the qualifying period had you qualify. All of the members qualified and the canvassing board certified the elections of the candidates. The term of office begins upon adjournment of your February meeting. So Councilmember Jaime Mandell will serve until after, until we adjourn at the February meeting, at which time Councilmember-elect Jesse Mandell will be assuming the role. That council meeting will be held Tuesday, February 21st, I think. No, it's not 21st, 24th, 6 o'clock, 25th, sorry, the 25th. Sorry, for the 25th at 6 o'clock, there is an agenda. And in fact, there is an item on the Wellness Center that we're going to be presenting that night. At which time, Councilman Mandell comes off the council and Councilmember-elect Jesse Mandell assumes responsibility in case we go to war with Sunny Owls. That Thursday, Thursday, the 27th, and all of our residents have received this invitation that will be in the mail today. Everyone has already received the save the date. On the evening of the 27th, we'll be honoring Councilmember Mandell's eight years of service. Well, he and his family will be recognized for that dedicated service to the community. At the same time, we'll be swearing in Mayor Singer to his 20th year as mayor and Councilmember Luskin for her years of service. We are asking that residents RSVP to that event. We have a lot of dignitaries that are coming in from Washington and Tallahassee to attend the event. So we want to make sure that we properly account for the number of seating. The mayor has asked that we have that ceremony at the beach pavilion, not here at the Civic Center. So we're going to honor that request. There'll be a swearing-in ceremony on the sand, cocktail to follow on the green, and then a sit-down dinner buffet style underneath the pavilion. So it's a three-phase event starting at 6:00 PM on Thursday, February 27th. Initially, we're going to have it in March. We moved it up because of the Jewish holidays in March and the rabbi and the reverend thought that that would be a better fit. So Thursday, February 27th, will be the swearing-in of our Councilmember-elect and our council and of course, honoring the eight years of service that Councilman Mandell, who has kept me on my toes during those eight years, will be honored. And Councilman Mandell, know that you will be missed, but you will not be forgotten because I hope that you still text me as often as you do. So that's how the elections occurred in Golden Beach this year. If there's any questions, you can see me or the clerk for that information. With that said, I want to thank Michael Glenn and Giselle and Linda and Captain Diaz, who actually were at the New Year's Eve event. I hear that it was a phenomenal event. We did spice things up a little bit. You know, when we do things over and over, they can become a bit mundane. But Michael, I know that Enrique and the staff did a phenomenal job. It was a great theme and well-attended. Please also know that if you RSVP for the event, let us know if you're going to cancel because then we over-anticipate and this year the turnout was a little bit less than before. So congratulations on the New Year's Eve event. Rudy, you and your staff did a phenomenal job, so thank you. Kirk McCoy and the Public Works team were all here that night. Thank you, Kirk, for all the hard work and dedication that you do. Know that Kirk is working on a beautification project of Golden Beach Drive. We started on the south side of the idea is that we get to Singer Park and we're going to be doing some improvements to the community. As it relates to the palms that have lost their luster, know that two things happened this year. We had a lot of rain, so a lot of overwatering of those palms. And then we had the weather the last couple of days with the winds. So most of it is wind burn, but hopefully they will be coming back. They're not lethal yellow, which is always the big scare with palms if it's lethal yellow. That's not the case. I had the honor this weekend to attend with 12 of our police officers the inauguration, inaugural events of our 47th president. Golden Beach was well-represented. As everyone knows, the event was moved indoors and so we had to do some last-minute scrambling. But know that your staff represented the community well at the inaugural events as we have for other presidents in sending a delegation to the inaugural events to assist in the public safety. And know that your team did very well and we're proud of the men and women that went there. Valentine's Day, February 14th, which is Friday, we'll be having an event here at the Civic Center in the town's terrace. It'll be the first event that we host on the town terrace. The town terrace, as you know, is adjacent to the chambers. It's going to be a movie night, movie date night. So come and join us for Valentine's Day movie on the town terrace on the 14th. We're super excited about that event. Know that we've got, we're, Councilman Mandell, know that we have started the audit with a new auditing firm, not a new auditing team, it's an entirely new firm. And we're hoping that we could get the town's audit to you by your April council meeting. That's what we're working on. Councilman Luskin, the issue with key fobs. So less than half of our community has picked up their key fobs. We are strong, less than half the community have picked up the key fobs. We are strongly recommending that our residents come and get their fobs. Your fob is what opens all of the gates in town and will start opening the restroom, the men and women restroom at the beach pavilion. Your fob is what gets you access to the gates. Now, we are seeing some of our more friendly residents who wish to encourage our neighbors from the south and north to come, where they're leaving the gates open, they're propping them open, they're putting rocks. Any resident who's found damaging, because that is actually damaging town facilities, will be fined accordingly. And we are finding that some residents are giving their fobs to their neighbors and their friends. Know that any people, any person who is violating the fob rule will be banned from using the facilities for a period that will be determined by the town council. We are seeing high utilization of the courts. We welcome that utilization so long as they're accompanied guests. There was an issue where you could stick your hand through the gate to push the button. We have resolved that. We have now encased the button in overkill, but you shouldn't be able to push your hand through the gates. But people are going to find ways. Look, the other day, there was a little kid trying to jump the gate. And you know, what are you going to tell an eight-year-old, you know? Don't do it, but we're not going to slap handcuffs on them. But the courts are available to be used. We are starting to see some settling of the courts. It's normal to see cracks on the courts. We will be fixing those cracks. In fact, the courts will be closed for three days in the not-too-distant future to make some of those repairs. We have ordered two benches for each of the courts, so we will have benches for people to put their bags in to take a break. We are not going to be providing shade. So we are not putting shade systems on the courts. The last time we had the shade systems, it really deteriorated the courts. And the idea is that you have the courts for one hour so that another resident can come in and use the facility. If you need shade, that's what the shade shelters are for, but we're not providing shades on the tennis courts unless the council by a majority vote directs us to do so. So for the time being, we're providing the benches so you can put your bag down, play your game, and get out so that others can use it. We are going to start enforcing more of the rules with our new program, our Park Ranger program. We've been trying to staff up the beach, the sea, excuse me, the CSAs, the Community Service As in the guardhouse. Our CSAs will be providing Park Ranger services on the weekends, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, which is where we're seeing peak use of the facilities. Their job is twofold. One, to patrol the beach to make sure that people are not recreating in the town of Golden Beach. And two, to keep people out of our recreational areas. Let me move on to our capital project updates. So as you know, that we're currently under, we're out the bid with the Wellness Center. There is a cone of silence that has been issued, which means that we really can't talk too much to any third parties who may be interested in bidding. We had over seven firms attend the first mandatory in-person pre-bid that was held last Thursday. This Thursday is the second mandatory pre-bid for any firm who did not attend the first one. And let me be very clear about what that means. Should you wish to bid on our Wellness Center project, you are required to attend in-person one of the two mandatory pre-bid meetings. Those who attended the first ones are going to be allowed to attend virtually to the second one. They do not need to attend. But if you're gonna bid on our Wellness Center project, you are required by requirements of the bid documents to attend one of the two mandatory pre-bid meetings. So in the first one, we had at least seven firms, we're hoping that we'll get as many respondents. Bids are due back Monday, February twenty fourth, that's why that date was in my head. So they're due back by 2:00 PM on Monday, February twenty fourth. And we're hoping that at the February twenty-fifth meeting, we'll be able to announce who the lowest bidder was, not award a contract, but just kinda give you a report of where we are. The plans are on our website, www.goldenbeach.us on the main page. We are ninety percent plans, and we feel pretty confident. I'll remind the council that the Civic Center's civil engineering is not a part of this award. We have a grant, and we just signed the contract with Craig A. Smith to design the civil side. So there'll be, the idea is that whoever has awarded the building, we will then negotiate a civil contract to do the site work, once we decide what the site work's gonna be. And as a reminder to our community, that's eight hundred and fifty free thousand dollars that we brought to our community, bringing our grand total of free resources to our community to over thirty-eight million dollars in free money that we've brought to this community over the last eighteen years that I've had the pleasure of serving as your town manager. So the Wellness Center project is well underway, the design is not changing, the council has already voted on that, and we're looking forward to awarding that contract at your March meeting. The CCTV project has a couple additional components. There's an item on the agenda tonight to add some cameras in some locations that we think are gonna be beneficial to our community. Know that we are fighting tooth and nail with the state to allow us to put in cameras on Ocean Boulevard. Those have not been approved yet. We have already started the installation of cameras on Ocean Ocean. As you know, the last storm did take away two of our poles, and we're looking to re-erect those poles. Hotwire, who's on the screen tonight, we've done most of the south side of town to the Strand. We now have our electrician putting power, and we're gonna start seeing cameras installed on the south side of town and move north. In the interim, because of our Ocean Boulevard residents who are demanding that we provide them with better protection, the council did authorize me to bring in portable cameras for Ocean Boulevard. We have two of them, one on the north side, one on the south side. Those cameras are, listen to this, they're LPR cameras, but they also have facial recognition, with a facial recognition database, that it captures your face, and if you're wanted, it alerts our police officers in real time to take enforcement action. The goal is that those cameras, stations are deployed while we work out a deal with the state to allow us to put our cameras on the state's right-of-way. Once that program ends, we will own one of the towers so that we can have for all of our events, to have that additional security whenever we have an event. So those camera trailers that you see on Ocean Boulevard are temporary, but that's part of our ongoing efforts to make sure that our Ocean Boulevard residents know that we spend as much money as we can on keeping their community, their part of the community as safe as we do on the inside. The Strand Guard House, as you know, we teased you in November with some ideas of how we can make the Strand Guard House speak the same language as the Civic Center and as the Wellness Center. We are looking to expand that project. I know that Ms. Camacho isn't here, but the mayor just authorized me to negotiate another contract with Access for the design of a north and south monument and a Beach Pavilion monument that speaks the same language. The goal is that as part of our new wayfinding program, A1A will have a consistent, clean, elegant, sleek look, so that from the time that you enter Golden Beach on the south side to the time that you leave Ocean Beach on the north side, you know that all of our facilities speak together. So we plan to bring you something at your April council meeting that will highlight the beauty of what it is to have a new wayfinding program, so that we are working. But to our residents who are so in love with the current guardhouse and the arches, know that that design is going away, we will be retiring that design, and the design will be something that speaks to the language of our community. And Councilman Jesse Mendel will be a big part of that as she's joining the council. That's why we're not bringing it to you at the February meeting, we wanna bring it to you when the new council is on the dais. The Police Annex Building, the council has authorized me to sign a contract with a vendor. We were kinda running on that project, we've put the brakes on it a little bit. What we wanted to do is, we started looking at the MEP, and we weren't very happy with the MEP plan, so we just hired an MEP engineer. That does not delay our Wellness Center, so let me talk to you about the plans that we're doing for that. So tonight, you're gonna be awarding, we hope, a contract to demo the existing town hall. We're gonna move the police operations to the bunker at the, after the February twenty-first meeting, twenty-fifth meeting, excuse me. They'll be moving to the bunker, that will allow us to demo the building while we await the renovations of the Police Annex, which the council has already awarded that contract. But we're re-phasing it, again, some of the MEP stuff started to become a little bit of a heartache. But the project is not going away. And in closing with my report, as part of your packet this evening, you have received your permit, your film and print permit, as I'm required to provide to council once a year an update. Know that filming in South Florida in general has decreased. As you know, the state, the governor, decided to get rid of the state incentives for filming in the state of Florida, so most of the filming has moved to Georgia and Alabama. But we still had close to forty-seven odd thousand dollars in filming last year, and we look forward to having the filming community come to Golden Beach. With that said, I know it was a little bit long-winded, but that is my twenty, my first report of the year. Oh, traffic, I think I covered it. Know that traffic has become a nightmare in South Florida. Know that we are most impacted by what's going on in Sunny Owls. It is not necessarily issues in Golden Beach. Councilmember Bursey, and I hear you loud and clear, and the chief and I will talk about when we decide to pull people over. Know that our officers have been instructed to not do it during peak hour unless it's a felony, but we'll be working with you. But it's just gotten, it's just awful. I mean, just the other night, I tried to leave here at nine o'clock at night to see if traffic would calm down. It took me almost an hour to get to my house at 9:00 PM because of the lane closures and surfside. Know that all of that just trickles through. Northbound, Howlandale Beach is doing some work near the bridge, which is causing some of the delays going northbound. So we're seeing it all over the place. And know that what we do, and you'll see it, we have an offshore station at 195 in Collins. Typically, it's James Camacho, who happens to be in the audience today. And you guys see James out there in his vest kinda keeping traffic going. He pops up in the trunk, and so, thank you Officer Camacho for constantly being out there. I know that most of the guys don't like that detail, but you're there all the time. But know that we're doing everything that we can to kinda keep traffic flowing. It's just something that we're dealing with. And hopefully, the CITT will start to find some solutions for traffic in South Florida. That is finally my report, sorry about that.
Any questions for the town manager from the council?
I just got a quick question.
Yeah.
Our TV broadcast.
Yes.
I know at one time.
It's on both Atlantic broadband and Hotwire, we simulcast the both.
But it used to be exclusively to the residents of Golden Beach at one time?
No, so know as part of the cable franchising agreements, and that's why you're able to see the Miami Beach City Council at your home. So it's a channel, just like any other channel, is on the lineup. And so if you are a recipient of one of the providers, our Hotwire channel is one sixteen fourteen, and on Atlantic broadband, it was like eighty-six. But it moved to six-six-five or something like that. But you're able to watch it everywhere. It's not, it's not, it's not closed to us only. Just like when we broadcast live, right now, if you go onto the goldenbeach.us website, you can see us live on that streaming service.
Thank you. A town attorney report?
Yes, nothing to report, all good.
Actually, I missed my report, so I'm gonna steal Steve's thunder, two things. Congratulations, Steve, on your new granddaughter.
Thank you.
Out in LA, so congratulations. I know that that was a long time coming. Also know that the town, with the permission of the mayor. Let's just mute Steve. All right, know that the town, with the direction the mayor, has directed the town attorney, and I am announcing publicly tonight that we are currently under zoning in progress. We are asking the town attorney to look at the rear setback lines on Ocean Boulevard. We believe that the current setback requirements for Ocean Boulevard are outdated and create a hardship for some of the newer homes that want to be built, because some of the older homes sit so far west, it creates a hardship to draw a line. As you know, our code currently requires to go to the north, house to the north and the house to the south, and draw a diagonal line, and that's where you could build it. What we're seeing is, as more of the lots on the north side of town are being purchased, some of the older homes sit very far west, making your lot almost undevelopable. So we directed the town attorney to come up with a fair and systematic depth of construction on our Ocean Boulevard residents. We know that it will create a hardship for some of the older homes. However, what we're seeing is with most of the new lots that are being acquired, the lot size, the developable lot size, has been diminished because of the way that we measure that line. So we have directed the town attorney to come up with a fair and consistent depth of lot for construction. Know that he's currently working on that and working with our town planner and the town administration. But we are gonna consider that zoning in progress, so anyone who wishes to redevelop their Ocean Zone One lots can come to us under our zoning in progress and present a reasonable design for the homes. It's something that has come up, there are currently a couple of homes that are under design that are asking for the town to look at it, and know that the town attorney is working on that. I just need to put that into the record so that we could actually declare us under zoning in progress. And we'll be bringing something to you, hopefully, at your February meeting to just start the dialogue. Thank you, Steve.
Mr. Helfen, in terms of the current injunction with the disclosure that took place, is that still on, has there been any developments on it?
Nothing new on that at all.
Okay, great. With that, ordinance is second reading.
Darnin.
Okay, ordinance first reading, item L. An ordinance of the town council amending the Town of Golden Beach Employees Pension Plan to provide for an updated definitions and optional forms of benefits. Would the town clerk please read this into record?
Yes, sir. An ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Golden Beach, Florida, amending Chapter Twenty-Four Personnel, Article Two, Retirement Division One, General Employees, by amending the Town of Golden Beach Employees Pension Plan at Section Twenty-four dash thirty-one definitions and Section Twenty-four dash thirty-four optional forms of benefits, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date.
Okay, the town manager like to...
Let me just, this is, this item is an item that I probably should have brought to the council years ago, and finally, with the permission of the mayor and with the permission of some of the council members. And by the way, I have already briefed the incoming council member on this item. So what this item does, we'll do a motion to approve in a minute. What this item does is very simple. It adds that the chartered officers, the chartered employee officers of the town be treated in a consistent manner. As you know, I, as your chartered officer, have a pension of twenty and out. Most cities have managers turnover after three to four years. In fact, six of my colleagues have lost their jobs just last month. Same thing with the town clerks. So typically, when a clerk gets hired, you know, it's every administration. In Golden Beach, people think that Ms. Perez works for me, she does not. Ms. Perez is an officer of the town, she is a chartered officer of the town, and she works for the mayor and council. There was a resolution passed by a previous council that provides the clerk report to the manager on a day-to-day basis. But Ms. Perez is a chartered officer of the town. So what this ordinance does, it treats her like me, like a chartered officer, and has a twenty and out program. So after twenty years of service, Ms. Perez will be able to join the drop for an additional five years. It basically recognizes all of the hard work of our chartered officers. The town attorney is a chartered officer, but is not an employee of the town, so this is not applied to the town attorney. Your charter only calls for three chartered officers, that's your town manager, your town clerk, and your town attorney. So this item just cleans that up. It's for first reading. I need a motion to approve, by the way.
I need a motion to approve this.
All right, so motion by Councilman Luskin, second by Councilman Mendel.
Thank you. I'm gonna open it up to the council.
Just, I think it's a great thing, very well deserved, absolutely.
I'm completely supportive of it. I thought there were some other people included in this, I was surprised to learn this, just...
Only chartered officers.
So it's only two town employees.
Correct, so mine was done seven years ago. This just brings the town clerk to equal footing as the manager.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to any other comments?
And one last thing, I'd just like to remind the community that prior to Ms. Perez, town clerks in town were like, you know, they changed hands so often. So this provides for just a fair continuity. We're hoping that once Ms. Perez, hopefully not anytime soon, that this will incentivize other clerks to stay as long as Ms. Perez currently has served.
I'm gonna open it up to the public now. Anybody have any comments or questions? I'm gonna close it to the public, let's have a vote on this.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Einstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'm gonna move to item M, quasi-judicial resolutions. Resolution of the Town Council approving a variance request for the property located at 105 and 115 Ocean Boulevard to permit the grade elevation exterior slabs and walkways to exceed the height called for in the town's code.
A resolution of the Town of Golden Beach, Florida, authorizing and approving a variance request for the property located at 105 and 115 Ocean Boulevard, Golden Beach, Florida, three-three-one-six-zero, to permit the property elevation not to exceed a height of thirteen point zero NGVD in grade and exterior slabs, decks, and wallways not to exceed a height of fifteen feet six inches when the town's code permits for a maximum grade elevation of eleven foot NGVD and exterior slabs, walkways not to exceed an elevation of thirty-six inches.
Thank you. Are there going to be people from the public who are going to speak on behalf of this? Would the clerk please give them the oath?
Yes, just raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
So do.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Would the town manager give us a little bit of a...
Need a motion to approve?
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
So this item, and we have the owner representatives here, and we thank them for being here. I'm gonna go try to save some time. So look, this item is one of these housecleaning items that we've been trying to deal with for Zone One. Zone One is very unique. The elevation is set at eleven, and through the years, because sand accumulates, the property has gotten higher and higher. The state does not allow us to remove the sand from the site. So you've approved like eight of these already over the course of the last couple of years. What this does is allow us for a higher elevation so that they can deal with degrading. It's consistent with all the variances that we've approved, there was no objection to it. By the way, it's the two, it's the second and third house that are gonna be demolished, there's gonna be a united title, they're gonna unify the lots, and they're building a beautiful, round-shaped building. So ironically, the Wellness, the Civic Center is not gonna be bookcased by two round buildings. The VREB had no objection to this, the planning director has no objection to this. It's a housekeeping item, we hope that the town attorney will help us clean this item up so we don't have to keep bringing them to you, but it's consistent with what you've done in the past. I think the owners reps are here, they're gonna wave in support, they're waving support.
Is there any questions the council have with regard to that? So on this item, and there's only one item on this.
Correct.
All those in favor, let's have a roll call.
Mayor Singer?
I think he might have left.
Vice Mayor Einstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to item N, the consent agenda. The official minutes of the November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four regular town council meeting. Has anybody have any objections to approving that consent agenda? So could I have a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve.
Without objection.
A second?
Second.
All the, a roll call, or with all those?
Consent, no objection, so this is fine.
Okay, fine. All those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. A town resolutions, item four under oh-four. A resolution of the Town Council authorizing and approving a second amendment to the contract with Keith and Associates, Inc.
A resolution of the Town of Golden Beach, Florida, authorizing and approving a second amendment to the contract between the Town of Golden Beach and Keith and Associates, Inc., providing for implementation and providing for an effective date.
I need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I need a second. Thank you.
So this item is a housekeeping item, look, I won't hide this from you. We had so many different iterations of what we were gonna do in the park that kept on affecting our stormwater capacity in the system. And then time kinda just ran out, so thanks... So thanks to the mayor's heavy-handed negotiations, although Keith wanted close to $100,000, they wanted $75,000 and another $25,000 to close out the project, we, we valued the work at about $50,000. There was a lot of work that was done beforehand and we're trying to get the permits closed out. This $50,000 settles any outstanding questions in terms of who owes what to whom, and it allows us to actually provide to Durham an after the fact permit for closing out the permit. Know that we are going to get 25,000 of this 50 from Garrett's so that we're, we're equal owners of this item, but this is a good faith, good item. I wish we weren't here, but the reality is that we had so many changes to what we did in the park. Also know that a, as you allowed me, we did enter into a contract with Craig A. Smith and Associates for less than what the council approved. You approved $100,000, we got it for $94,000 to do the civic center master plan for the Wellness Center site, which includes the top lot, the dog park, and that area. And so we're going to be working with, with Steve Smith from Craig A. Smith and Associates on that site, but we were able to negotiate that as well. So this is a, a good housekeeping item. Know that this is coming from the interests of the money that we have. This is not costing our residents not a penny and 25,000 will come from Garrett's.
Any questions?
No.
I'm going to open it up to the council. Okay, we'll have a roll call. Oh, did I get a motion on this?
Yeah, yep. Get your own roll call.
Okay, thank you. Let's have a roll call.
Mayor Singer? Vice Mayor Einstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Okay, the item passes. Now we go to O five. A resolution of the town council approving a construction contract with Thunder demolition Inc. for the demolition services related to the existing town hall meeting. May I have a, please read?
Nope.
The record?
Yeah.
A resolution of the town council, the town of Golden Beach, Florida, approving a construction contract with Thunder Demolition, Inc. for demolition services related to the existing town hall building, providing for implementation and providing for an effective date.
May I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Going to have a second.
Second.
Thank you.
I'll try to keep it brief. Let me tell you kind of where we are and why we're waiting competitive. So we did, we went out to the market to try to get prices to knock down the building. Two prices came in and they were just absolutely ridiculous. You would think that we were building a new building. And so thanks to our assistant town, town manager, Ms. Linda Eperson, what we did is we said, okay, who's knocking down buildings in Golden Beach? And there were only like three big players that were knocking down buildings in Golden Beach. There's a couple of questions as to whether or not the building has asbestos or not. And so we're putting that turnkey to the, to the contractors. Their responsibility to, to deal with that. We, we don't believe that there are fibrous asbestos material in that building, but there are two things in that building that we are going to preserve and I'm going to announce that tonight. So we are going to preserve, if you remember in the old chambers, the terrazzo floor has a, a, a gold leaf seal and some wording in the terrazzo. We're actually going to saw cut that out and that's going to be a cornerstone of the new plaza of the Wellness Center. The idea is that we honor the location of the existing town hall and keep a piece of the town hall as part of our new plaza. We think that that was a good way to honor what our community has done for the last 95 years in the plaza of the Wellness Center. And that's kind of, I know this sounds corny, but I think that it's, I think that we need to remember all of the changes that we've had in our community. That's number one. Also, in Rudy's old office on the second floor is what has stood proud for the last, God, I want to say that building is probably 60 something years old, but the, on the face, on the facade of the building, it says Town of Golden Beach. And with very little, if any, effort over the last 60 years and none during the last 18 years, it has stood proud as a gateway to our community. So we will be saving that block with the wording and we're going to make it as part of our civic center complex. The idea is that we never lose sight of where we've come. And although the civic center complex, complex will ultimately be, you know, over a $25 million complex, we want to preserve the history of what the Ralston Brothers started, which was, you know, a community, a, a single family residential. So those two components will be saved, preserved, and added to the site. Thunder Demolition has agreed to knock down the building for what I consider a very fair price compared to others. There's a questions from the council about Southeast's price. Look, we like Southeast. Southeast has done a great job. They're not in the demolition business. Thunder is. Thunder has knocked down, I would say, probably 90% of the homes in town. And so they've agreed to, to a very fair price and we're looking forward to working with Thunder. So I ask that you approve this. The goal, because you're all going to ask what's the timeline, the goal is that after our February meeting, the police move into this building and we immediately start the demolition of the old town hall so that we can be prepared for the construction of the Wellness Center upon your approval. Know that we have directed the town staff to submit the current 90% documents to building for review. A permit application will be opened this week so they can begin their cursory review of the permits for the Wellness Center. Once we award a contract to the successful bidder, we can give you a better timeline in terms of when we're going to get started. The idea is that we do everything that we can on our side to advance the development. So knocking down the building, starting with the permitting and starting to get us in there. And a site fence will be going up before the end of the month to create a site plan there. We will preserve as much green space as we can as part of the tennis center park so our residents can start to enjoy. So we are going to limit the footprint of that site, but we ask your favorable approval of this item.
Couple of comments?
Yes.
The emblem that you're talking about on the floor in the old town hall, there's carpet there now. It's under the carpet, right? Because I don't remember ever seeing it.
I, I've never seen it. There are pictures of it and Councilman Einstein, Vice Mayor Einstein, you've been on the council forever.
Yeah.
I say that with a lot of respect, sir, not because of your age, but because of your experience.
The other thing that's probably, it's not very pretty, but it's very, very old, is the black sign on the lawn when you walk in.
Is that still there? Okay, we'll, we'll save it.
That's got to be close to 80 years old.
We'll, we'll definitely preserve that.
I'm not quite sure what to do with it, but I hate to just toss it because that.
No, 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 well, I already have a perfect location for it.
Okay.
We'll, we'll do that as early as tomorrow. I forgot about that sign.
I hope it's still there.
It's somewhere.
We have a lot of memories of things that are tied on that sign and.
It's going to look great hanging on the second floor hallway. Second floor hallway. We'll, we'll take care of it.
Just don't throw it out.
We won't.
Any other questions?
No questions.
It was Kirk, tell Kirk to edit.
A real quick question, and I, I think I was looking over the bid documents of the items that you're going to do. And I think three decades ago, when I did my house, there was something about rodents. You have to have somebody go in there and.
That's your, your code requires that. So remember.
Go in there because when they open these things up.
All the rats.
The old town hall?
Anywhere.
Anywhere, they just start, they, they leave there and they go somewhere else, so.
Yeah, so, so.
If they're, if they're there.
Just know that that's part of your normal, everyday demolition. You're required to do.
It is a, for some reason.
Yes.
I don't know if I saw it as part of the bid.
Yeah, so you have to, not only have to close all your utilities, you have to do pest abatement as part of that process. You also have to create your exterior site fence with your proper MPD, yes. So we'll, we'll follow all that.
Just real quick, we didn't have to go RFP on?
No, because again, we were waiving competitive bidding because we did receive five quotes. We only presented you two. The other three were just nowhere close to it. Your, the cost to advertise?
Yeah, how much?
Would it cost about $8,500 to advertise?
Yeah, it's pretty close.
And so with this bid, less than $100,000, we think.
By, by the way, the, the fact that we did not have an election, how much did that save the town?
$12,000 is what we budget for elections.
And, and that we did not have to spend that?
We did not have to spend that.
Great. Okay. With that, let's have a roll call vote.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Einstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel? Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're now going to move to O eight. A resolution of the town council approving the installation and activation of the additional cameras relating to the town's closed circuit television CCTV project with Hotwire Communications, Inc. Would the town clerk please read this in the record?
Yes, sir. A resolution of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, approving, number one, the assembly installation and activation of three cameras adjacent to the civic center and tennis/pickleball courts. Number two, the installation and activation of a 270 multi-lens IP camera with accessories at 200 South Island Drive. And number three, the installation and activation of a new camera with three lenses at Terracina Park, a new pole, as part of the town's closed circuit television CCTV project with Hotwire Communications, Inc., providing for implementation and providing for an effective date.
Okay, I'd like a motion to approve this. Motion?
Second.
Thank you. Let's have the town manager give us a little.
So this is a housekeeping item. We're expanding our CCTV network. We're going to be providing some on South Island, North Island, and clearly here in the park. Wherever we see that we could expand the system, we're going to expand it. Know that we've been very pleased with the results of the system. We've already been able to, to be activated by the, sorry, to be informed by the cameras that there are individuals who have come in our community that were up to no good and the cameras actually alerted our guard and said, hey, pay attention, there's something going on here. And we've been able to actually use the cameras as a good crime fighting tool, which is why the state of Florida needs to change its laws and allow cities to put cameras on Ocean Boulevard so that we can be able to protect our residents from people who are coming into our community to do bad. So Governor DeSantis, if you're watching, because I know you watched this meeting, we need to change the law and allow Golden Beach with cameras up on Ocean Boulevard.
I'm sure he heard that.
The mayor's not here, so I get to say a couple of things.
Hey, he's back. He's back. I'm going to open it up to the council. Councilman Luskin?
No, I'm good with it.
All right, roll call.
We are. Are anybody in the public want to say anything? Okay, let's have a vote on this. Could we have a roll call?
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Einstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving right along to town resolution O seven. A resolution of the town council accepting the town clerk certification of results of the February 18th, 2025 town election.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, accepting the town clerk's certification of the results of the February 18th, 2025 town election for mayor and two town council members designating the vice mayor, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing an effective date.
I'd like a motion to.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I would ask that, that the current council member abstained from making the motion. We'll have Councilman Bernstein make the motion and Councilmember Mendel second it.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay.
And Councilmember Mendel, second. Thank you very much. Town manager?
So as you know, the candidacy board met and canvassed and found that the, the two open seats had two candidates that were, who met the qualification requirements as prescribed by your charter and also that Mayor Singer was the only candidate for the position of mayor. We are asking that you certify the results of the elections. This, this item goes into effect upon adjournment of your February meeting.
I'm going to open it up to the council.
No comments.
Congratulations to the reelected positions of the mayor and to Councilman Judy Luskin. How many years is it for you?
20, I believe.
Or more?
20 or more.
Come with me.
Come with you?
Come with me.
Where am I going?
We're going to go down here real quick. I need to talk to you.
Are we done?
Nope. Roll call. She's not in the room.
Uh-oh.
Okay, oh.
Roll.
Can we, can we take a roll call?
Yeah.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Einstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Which brings us to a discussion in direction to town manager. Mayor Glenn Singer has an item on seawalls, I believe.
Yes. And, and.
Yes.
And mayor, I want to thank you for tolerating this meeting. I know that you had your procedure yesterday and thank you. This is a very quick item. The mayor has directed the town staff to really become more aggressive and exploring the number of homeowners who are violating the town's code as it relates to upgrading their seawalls upon sale of the property. So Ms. Eperson has worked on a list. We have over 23 homes that have switched hands and the new owners are just playing us along. I'm going to give you an example of what I mean. We have one seat, one new resident who, not a new resident, we have a resident developer who purchased a lot. He knows he needs to put in the seawall and he tells the town staff, and I quote, well, I'm just hoping that I don't need to put in the wall because I'm planning to flip the property and we're hoping that the new buyer puts it in. That's not the intent of our code. The intent of our code is that if you buy a property in Golden Beach and your seawall needs to be upgraded, that you do so. Another example, we have a, a family who purchased three lots in town. They're required to put in three new seawalls. They feel that they can make more money by renting out two of the properties and only putting in one wall. The code says you must put in the wall. We're not in the business of helping our residents become more successful. We are in the business of making our community safe and sustainable. So the mayor has been pretty concerned that the town staff, through its attorney as well, is not becoming more assertive in ensuring compliance. So the mayor has asked. So the mayor has asked-
Remember, we passed that, we changed the law probably six years ago, Alex?
Yes.
Where if you properly changed hands, okay, they had X amount of time to fix the seawall.
Hundred and eighty days.
And they wanted to take advantage of that. And one of my suggestions is that, that before they get any permit to do any construction on the house, the seawall needs to be done first. Okay, what we're getting is people that are buying the house, saying they're going to fix the seawall, apply for a permit, do construction in the house and out of the house, and then never do the seawall. So our, one of our enforcement powers is not to allow them to get a construction permit until the seawalls fixed.
The, the other part, Mayor, is that we're, we have total disclosure with regard to this. Anybody purchasing a home in Golden Beach, when they ask for their lien letter-
They're made aware of it.
There's totally aware of the fact that you're buying a house in Golden Beach, and the seller, please get an inspection of the seawall, and it's either going to be you or the seller who's going, if we, you find defects to, what's the percentage of it?
There's no percentage. It's-
Is there a calculation though, or something?
It's based on a new requirement.
A lot of it has to do with the height of the walls. Most of the walls are under our, our minimum elevation.
Right.
So typically, if you're going to spend the money to raise the cap, you're going to fix the wall.
So the people are on notice when the buyers are totally on notice of the situation that they have, do we have fining powers also?
So, so as you know, back in twenty-eighteen, when this ordinance passed, because of our staffing deficits, we asked the town attorney to have someone from his office assigned to working with Ms. Epperson on this. We can issue code violations. The property owner has the first one-hundred-and-eighty days to begin the process. What we're finding is that they just, they just don't want to do it, you know? Nobody wants to spend that kind of money after buying a property, especially if they're not doing a lot of work to the house. And so Steve is going to be working with Linda to become a little bit more aggressive. We're going to start going to court and issuing violations and trying to get compliance. Like I said, you'll be surprised by how cavalier some of our residents are in that they know that they're going to flip the property. They don't want to spend the time or energy to do that. They know that, that they're renting the property. Why spend the money to, to, to make those improvements? And that's just a handful of the comments. We have others that are just flat out just ignoring every letter of the sentence.
Hundred and eighty days have not passed. They don't have to do anything yet, correct?
So during the first hundred and eighty days, you have the right to kind of begin the process. But what we're seeing is that most of these are well beyond the hundred and eighty day.
Well, then they're-
And then in some case, they'll come in and apply for a permit and do absolutely nothing. Kind of just to kind of say, okay, I'm going to do something. Let's get the city off our backs. But then a year passes and not a single, you know, stone has been removed, nothing has been done. So I think the mayor is correct. I think that our, our time of trying to be patient and try to, try to get compliance without taking a code action, I think that that time has come and passed. And I think that the attorney and I just need to become a little more aggressive in, in getting compliance. Because let me, let me tell you what the reality is. For all of those homes that aren't taking action, the people who suffer are the neighbors and our infrastructure. And you're seeing it throughout the community when we have all the saltwater intrusion that we're getting. So Mayor, I commend you for, for bringing this forward. I think that we need to do a better job and know that we will do so. And Steve, I know that you're listening. This is more-
Yes.
This is more directed at your staff to help us with this issue.
I, I have two thoughts. I'm not sure, are we finished?
No, no, absolutely.
One, whereas I appreciate, I appreciate our wanting to enforce this. A, I don't think that, I think that this is a long process. Going through Durham, as we all know, can take a long time. And just thinking that we'll get this approved in six months, I think is incredibly unrealistic. But I do think that, that, and I, and I think that having, having the punitive point to where you can't start anything with the house is just hurting our community. That if someone is buying a house and looking to tear it down, and we're just going to delay the process of starting a home, I don't think that's the right penalty for it.
If, if I may, Councilmember Bernstein, if it were the case that someone was actually, actually has plans in Durham, right?
Let me, let me just finish.
We agree. Know that they're not even at that step.
Let me, I'm just saying, I'm just first addressing, I'm just first addressing the punitive nature of it. So I'm just saying that I think that the penalty of not getting the permit approved within a hundred and eighty days, first of all, I think it's an unrealistic deadline, and two, I think it's just, it doesn't benefit our community to do that. I just think we should come up with something else, some other punitive way of doing it or something. But I don't think preventing them from moving forward with the house is the right way. I think that we can, like, I think the first step is that they have to be filing for something with a hundred and eighty days. And if there are certain steps that are being taken, that can be looked at, like, you know, Linda's probably seen a hundred or so many different reasons for delays in these permits. I just think that we need to be cognizant of that and not just punitive to stop the building. The second thing is, is that when we agree to this new seawall height, it's, it's looking to the future. That I think there's a lot of seawalls that are currently in there, including, and maybe as, as I know this myself, a seawall where it doesn't have, I've never had water go over. So I just don't see how, I, I don't see, when, when you say it's, it's horrible for the community, I just don't see if, if it's not one of the areas where you're having flooding and constant overflowing over it, that it's, I, I think there's two different types of-
Agreed.
Of issues. There, there's the ones that's overflowing with, which I think we need to deal with immediately. And I think that we can have a little more flexibility on the home, the homes that might not be compliant. They're, they're not conforming, but they're, they're compliant with the current code. And when they, when they transfer over, maybe we can be a little bit more-
Councilmember Bernstein-
Complacent with that.
We agree with you a thousand percent. And in fact, this is settled law. The council has already taken action on this. And we agree with you a thousand percent. If we're seeing homeowners or buyers who are actively engaged in the permitting process, we extend the hundred and eighty days by another hundred and eighty days. What we're, what we're not seeing, what we're, what we're seeing is there's no action. No, no firm has been retained to go through the permitting process. No designs of plans have been submitted. We're seeing people who are saying, I'm not going to do anything during that hundred and eighty days. They're not even going to hire someone to come up with plans because A, they're just not going to follow the rule, or B, they want to flip the property.
And I'm, I'm not objecting to this. I'm just, like I said, I'm just, I'm just saying, I think there's different-
But, but we agree-
Different ones to push and different ways to-
But we agree one thousand percent. Anyone who is actively engaged, and we're seeing a good faith effort to come into compliance, we leave those alone. In fact, we, we actually helped them along. It's the, it's the others that are saying, go fly a kite, that we need some compliance with.
I'm going to open this and, open to the public. I just got to ask one, or one of my comments. I just feel like, I feel like our administration usually pens over backwards with residents for the most part. And it must have reached a stage in certain circumstances that they just need more power or more guts and whatever they have to do. I know on the Regalia, if people remember, they had a permit with Sunny Isles, and they were going to lose it. So they put a crane on there, and that crane sat there for like a year, I think, or two. How long did it take?
Wow, almost-
In order to keep the permit open. And whatever. I don't know that, I don't know what the application game means.
And tonight's, and tonight's discussion is really just informing the council. Because again, this is settled law. So the council has already provided its, its feedback. Everything that we could do is now administratively, especially with the mayor. As you know, the, the mayor and I are allowed, without council consent, to issue administrative orders, so long as we both agree on those orders. And part of what we're doing tonight is putting the public on notice that if you fail to act in Golden Beach, we're no longer going to be, you know, wearing kitty gloves. We're going to make sure that we're aggressively having you come into compliance. It's only fair. And, and Councilmember Bernstein,
I, I just-
I'm very sympathetic to those causes.
I just raise it as we're, as we're giving it to Steve to look at. I'm just saying, what I just heard suggested, I think, is just a little, I think we, there's creative ways to, to, to deal with directly those people that we feel like are shirking it.
Absolutely.
And just-
And we'll, and we'll work your office on, on those issues.
And we have a public, oh, I'm sorry. Before we get to public.
And I think we also need to take in account that you mentioned there's neighbors that are living with the results of-
Absolutely, yeah.
It is horrible.
Yeah.
I agree with what you said, Councilmember Bernstein, but the one or two homes, and I've seen them-
The homes that are not complying, yes, I agree a hundred percent.
And we bend over backwards.
Really? I mean, they smell-
I, I couldn't agree more. I didn't mean imply otherwise.
Mr. Son, I believe has-
Hi, Jeff Song, two sixty-four South Parkland. I echo Commissioner Bernstein's comments. I have a neighbor who's going to knock down his house and build a beautiful house. The prior neighbor put in a newer seawall, probably when I first bought my lot in twenty-eleven or twenty-twelve. So his seawall's in pretty good shape. I hate to see his plans held up. He's going to put the cap, but he's got a good seawall. My concern is, I'm a voter. I've been around the islands a few times. We do have homeowners who haven't sold, but they have very poor seawalls. I saw one neighbor that we had the flash flood, had extraordinary flooding in her backyard because in the fifty years she's lived here, she's never fixed her seawall. And that has affected the, the area. So I, I would only ask that, you know, we concentrate more on the seawalls who are in poor condition.
Absolutely.
Linda Epperson did a great job many years ago when I first moved in, identified thirty-three bad seawalls. And then a list was made, and I think some efforts were made to encourage those people to fix them. But then we changed to, well, let's just tell people to, to fix them when they buy them. But I don't think that's the real issue. The issue is what Commissioner Bernstein said, which is we need to really look at the seawalls that are not in great shape, whether they're existing homeowners or new homeowners. Because that's what affects everybody, is that seawall's in poor condition. So the ordinance doesn't cover that, unfortunately. And I'm hoping we put some more emphasis on somehow either enacting a new ordinance or something about people that've got cracks in their seawalls, they need to fix them, not just when they buy a new house. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and to echo Mr. Song's discussion points, I, I do think that dealing with the homes that have the cracks and that are coming into the streets, as we've talked about in the past, is our biggest issue. I mean, to me, to me at least.
Agreed.
Next item, Council, Vice Mayor Einstein had a hotwire billing rates. I think I'm going to let-
Sure.
The Town Manager-
And I want to thank David Sayhouse, who's on the Zoom call. David, I know that this is a lot longer than I promised it would be, but here's kind of where we are. So as you know, as part of our hotwire contract, the city had to meet a minimum penetration rate to, to be able to keep our discounted rates moving forward. And, and, and that timeline moved back and forth. And, and, and then the question has come, since we have X number of residents that in some cases exceeds the number of condominium units in a smaller condominium, who get a negotiated bulk rate deal. Councilman Einstein asked that we work with Howard to come up with what we can do to better the offering of video services to our residents, knowing two things. Number one, the town is not interested whatsoever in signing a bulk deal with Hotwire. We, 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 we feel that that, the bulk era is, has ended with this, with the cable project. We don't want to force cable onto anyone who doesn't necessarily want it, and we all know that cable is a dying breed. You know, I, I think I have fourteen subscriptions to fourteen different providers. So Hotwire has taken a little bit of a, of a, of a pause and looked at this issue. And I believe we're, we're heading towards it, and we still need a couple of weeks to iron it out. But I don't think that they're as concerned as to whether or not we hit that number in order to offer the residents of Golden Beach a preferred rate. It won't be as good as a bulk rate, because a bulk rate guarantees them X number of dollars each month for building the infrastructure. But it won't be your, the retail rates. And so David and I, and David Romles and others, I've been working to make sure that there is no honeymoon phase. We will have a preferred discounted promotional rate for our residents moving forward, irrespective of how many people sign in. We're also going to be looking at the bills to see, to make sure that the proper billing has occurred as it relates to charges for equipment. And, and in the case that we're, charges for equipment have been charged, maybe reversing some of those charges or giving credits on your bill. Because of the nature of the regulated industries, we're not going to get into specific numbers tonight. That wouldn't be fair from a competitive perspective for Hotwire. But know that the idea is that some of the promotional rates that you saw two years ago, absent licensing requirements, because as you know, licensing fees are not managed or regulated by the provider, that the residents of Golden Beach will have a permanent promotional rate for the remaining term of the contract as if we had a bulk contract signed with them. Now, David is working with their legal office and their CFO to get this approved. We feel pretty confident because of the nature of the fact that we are their only city that has a bulk contract for, for, for internet, knowing that Councilman Bernstein wants us to explore the alarm monitoring system, and knowing that I have directed Hotwire to look at other ways that we can become a smart city by providing irrigation and lighting on a smart city grid. They are happy to come to the table to work on a better rate for our residents. As soon as I have those rates, I will be releasing it to the council. Again, they won't be as nice as a bulk contract rate, because that obligates me to obligate the town, and we're not going to do that unless the majority of the council wishes to do so. And what I have gathered, the council is not interested in, in going in that direction. But it won't be the, the retail rates. And what I gather with my conversation with David over the last two weeks, and Councilman Einstein, Vice Mayor Einstein, thank you again for bringing this to our attention. We can't fix what we don't know. So I want to thank you for that. Know that David believes that it will be as, as, as rewarding as it was during our original promotional series. And so we're going to be working to get those original promotional rates. And there won't be a sign up today, and it's good for ninety days, and then we hit you with a, with a sticker shock later on. So we're working on it. We're excited. The Hotwire is, is interested to come to the table to do so. David, I stole in your thunder. Is there anything else that you wish to?
You, you totally stole the thunder. It's okay, though. No, thanks for sharing that, because I think ultimately, you're, you're right. I mean, again, I've been in, in the, the industry for a little bit. I've been a hotwire for ten years, and I can tell you that in this environment where you don't have a bulk TV service, where you only have an internet service, that, yeah, the, the rates are just pretty much standard retail costs. And the path that we're headed in right now, I can tell you that it will be something very special. We're, we're really interested in really doing it. This has been an awesome partnership with all the different projects that we've, that we've been working on with the city. We're super proud to be here. And I think that once we cross this final bridge, so to speak, and we, we get what we're looking for, to Alex's point, we'll advertise that with everyone, and I think it's going to be a point to celebrate and, and hopefully drive others that, you know, don't have some other service installed to, to finally come on board with Hotwire. So I, I'm optimistic that we will be getting some good news on all this very soon.
We will promote that fact-
Yes.
Our newsletter-
Yes.
Should it be something that, you know, we will get more subscribers, hoping that that'll bring down the rates for the, the gross person. And we appreciate your efforts in doing this. Appreciate your-
Yes.
And the way this came up, and I think there's an important definition that people should become aware of, and that is that bulk rate, which I was not, I was a little familiar with. But I had a brother-in-law who had Hotwire up in BoCare, and he told me the number that he was paying for his community, which had less signed up residents, but they have signed up as a bulk rate, which was a very, you know, interesting rate. And I brought it to Town Manager, and evidently I'm glad that you've been able to address this.
And we're still, we're still, again, thank you. And I say this a lot to our residents who move here. I'm only as good as the information that is provided to me. And so it's important for our residents to know that if I don't know, I can't help. And so Vice Mayor Einstein, thank you for bringing this to our attention. Before other people start to leave, especially staff.
I'm sorry, but before we get off Hotwire, David, thank you so much for staying on. I had no idea you were staying till the end. I just want to bring up the question I've been asking along, and I just want to make sure we're on the same path.
Alarm monitoring.
Is to try to get rid of the middleman with the alarm monitoring and have it go directly from the house to the police station.
It's an unrelated discussion, and we are exploring, like I mentioned earlier, other smart city opportunities for Hotwire. Yes, it's something that we're looking at. We are also talking to the attorneys to make sure what our liability would be by cutting out the middleman in case of then that we, that we dropped the ball on. It's something that we're definitely looking at. And know that it's, it's, it's at the forefront of, of my agenda because of the council's action. Let me just say this. Because the Megan, David, Ahmad are still here, I would like for us to take a group picture at, at the ambulance downstairs before you guys go home. So upon adjournment, we're all going to go downstairs for a group picture. I want to thank you guys for being here these last two hours and staying. And I don't, I don't want to miss the opportunity of getting a picture with the council.
Oh, sorry. I had no idea you guys were staying for that. Sorry about that.
We didn't know that.
But we, we definitely want that picture.
We would have gone down. I'm sorry. Town Manager?
I am withdrawing my discussion. I'm, and we're going to move it to the next meeting.
Is there any other items that we-
Just to remind the council that Tuesday, February twenty-fifth is your next meeting, and February fourteenth is our Valentine's event. And no, there is no Golden Seniors Luncheon tomorrow. It has been canceled due to the weather. I don't know what weather, but it was canceled due to the weather. A motion to adjourn is always appropriate, and I am going to require that we all go downstairs for that photo, even if you're here, just to support your wife.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
If we could go downstairs for the picture with the ambulance, I, I don't want to miss that opportunity.